Good evening, I'm calling the Monday, December 10th, 2018 Planning Commission Meeting to Order. Everyone, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Alright, first item on the agenda tonight is the approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have any requests for changes or additions? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Kirk, and do I have a second? Commissioner Weber, seconds. All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Agenda is approved. Next up, approval of minutes from the meeting held Monday, November 19th, 2018. Do I have any requests for changes or edits? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I move to approve the planning commission minutes dated November 19th, 2018.
We have a move by Commissioner De Sanctus, do I have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Higgins is second. All those in favor to approve the minutes, say aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Moving along, we have one public hearing this evening. First is Xcel Field Area Network Monopole/Antenna Installation Site Plan and Variance Request. Location 12580 Technology Drive. This is a request for a site plan review on 12.16 acres and a variance to permit a monopole tower at 165 feet. Will the proponent of the project please step forward? Good evening.
Good evening.
If you would, would you say your name and spell it for the record, please?
Yes, good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Chris Rogers, and I am a principal land right agent with Xcel Energy out of Minneapolis, here to talk about the project at our Eden Prairie substation. I have a PowerPoint, so if we could pull that up, oh, there it is. So, the Eden Prairie substation at, I think it's 12580 Technology Drive, right around the corner here. We are proposing to put in what we call a Field Area Network, or Fan as an acronym. I might call up Chris Searls here, maybe if he could come up and just give a brief explanation of what we're looking at on the screen here. But the Fan Network is a way for our substation to communicate with our customers, meters. So Chris, if you want to come up and maybe give a quick overview of the, what's going on with the Field Area Network, that would be great. This is Chris Searls.
Good evening, Chris Searls, Fan Planning Engineer for Xcel Energy. And so this is a two-tier network, and this particular installation we're working on is regarding the YMAX tier. It's a 3.65 gigahertz network, putting out 10 watts. And it hooks in with the Y-SUN tier at various points on distribution poles, and we'll be putting that forth much later. But this is the initial part of the project to get rolling first. You put in the base station first, and then from there, you work your way out to the devices in the field that will be serving.
And so the Field Area Network is basically a way for our company to communicate better with our customers and their meters. Correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but we'll be putting smart meters into customers' meters in the area. The purpose of the monopole, we'll have an antenna on the top of it, and that antenna will be able to talk to these customers' meters. And we're able to track things like outages, usage, demand. It's a really, really pretty neat way for us to manage our customers' load, track outages quicker and those type of things. It's part of our smart grid. Anything to add to that, Chris, as far as what it can do?
Yes, so we'll be speaking with switches, capacitor band controls, reclosers, other devices in the field. Gives us a much faster bandwidth to those devices. We can already speak with them today, but on a much slower radio system. And so this will give us a very quick response to issues that come up in the field. So that, we've got a couple new programs, IBBO and FLISER, that are two acronyms that basically represent a way for us to measure the voltage at many more points along the power line, as well as... The FLISER is actually a fault location isolation service restoration. So it's a matter of making very rapid changes in the field when there's a problem.
This is really a way for us to enhance our reliability to our customers and to stay ahead with technology, so it's really a good thing. The Field Area Network project here in Eden Prairie is one of three locations we're looking at for a pilot. We're looking at another location in St. Paul, another one in Minneapolis. And those ranges, if you will, from these monopoles will carry out a radius anywhere from, what, a couple miles, maybe?
Yeah, about three to five miles generally in the metro area here.
And depending on topography and those type of things and other interference. But Eden Prairie Substation being one of them is our pilot for down here. Next year, we'll be looking at a number of more sites, too, trying to spread them out through the metro area to help basically build our Fan Network, and eventually it'll be metro-wide, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Any questions on the general concept of the Field Area Network, commissioners at all? So the location?
Excuse me, I have a question.
Commissioner De Sanctus.
You said you're going to increase the bandwidth with the Fan Network. Do you anticipate any interruption or impact on cell service on the adjacent freeway system or in the commercial area to the south of that property?
So, cell service is a little bit different band than what we're working in. So we'll be clear of anything they're doing and vice versa.
This is, correct me if I'm wrong, this is a private network. This is not a public cell network that we're putting on. This is something specifically between Xcel Energy and the company.
So it's assigned a bandwidth by the FCC?
Yeah, we're working in, so 3.65 is a bandwidth. It is a public bandwidth, but it is not shared with cellular. So while it's, while it's public, we'll use certain channels of it, and then we'll work on a channel plan to work around any interference-type issues that might come up. Hopefully that helps you.
I have a quick question as well.
Sure.
And I don't know much about bandwidths or anything like that, but I have been looking into smart home technology and, you know, all the different devices now you can set up to connect your lights and whatnot via Wi-Fi. And from what I'm understanding, there's lots of different kind of frequencies that these can operate on or different levels of Wi-Fi and/or different types of signals. Is this particular signal, you know, is that going to interfere with any of the kind of like emerging other technology that people are using in their homes?
So I can answer that. So we're on 3.65, and most of the Wi-Fi is going to be 2.6 or 5.8 or 6.0 gigahertz. So we're kind of between bands, and so we shouldn't be an issue with them. And then some of the technology that'll tie into potentially electric meters, working on the home area network for things that, you know, thermostat control, things like that, that will be in the 900 megahertz. So that's down kind of in the cellular band, but it's a frequency hopping band, so it works around any issues with cellular.
Okay, thanks.
Question? Are there any questions?
None at this time.
Thank you. The other slide we had pulled up there.
Well, I'll wait for your slide, let's see your next slide.
That's just the location of the, of the substation, which is right around the corner from us here. North side would be Highway 5, basically, south side is Technology Drive. Substation's been there for a number of years. Did you have a question?
On the last slide. I was wanting to give you a chance to do your slides. So the Fan that's going to be communicating, is that communicating just with the access points? Because the AMI meters will be populating themselves up through the neighborhood area network into the Fan, is that correct?
That's, that's correct, but the Field Area Network actually includes the Y-SUN and the YMAX tiers.
Okay, so what language will the meters be speaking?
The languages, the meters, I guess that's a good question. That'll be in the Y-SUN tier, and it's proprietary with Itron, which is Fort Myers-Summer Springs.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, oh, I had a whole bunch of questions, I can't remember what they are now. Oh, so will this, so is this investment part of the time-of-use pilot that the PUC approved?
Yes, it is, actually. So this, this is part of the Westgate feeder, High Wath, the West feeder, and Midtown feeders will all be fitted with bellwether meters for the IBBO pilot. And that is, that's what this is about, yes. So, so even though we're locating in Eden Prairie, we originally were going to go to Westgate, but we've been skewed over to Eden Prairie. And we can still cover the feeder network with the majority of the feeder network anyway with this installation.
And then is the Fan said to be two-way to send, to send information down into the neighborhood, as well as take information from the neighborhood back up?
That is correct. So we can interrogate meters, we can, there'll be many other features that we can do with that, so.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
Glad I brought you with tonight. As we talked about, the location of the Eden Prairie Substation's been there for a while, between Highway 5 and Technology Drive. Just a reference for you up there and where that is, probably drive by it every day.
Just a question about that, if you go back to the map?
Yep.
So you said it was three to five miles, so this would service maybe part of Bloomington, Edina, Minnetonka?
Yeah, we would hope to get into at least over where the Viking substation is. You can see on the right edge of the map in that area some. And then it does propagate a little bit better to the, to the west. Go south a little ways, and obviously as the terrain falls off near the airport towards the river, it overshoots at that point. So, but we'll get a good chunk of it of the city with this site.
Thanks.
This is an aerial view of the actual substation property with the property boundaries in green. And you can kind of see where the black arrow is pointing, the red dot is the approximate location of the proposed monopole. And then from there, to give you a kind of an example, these are pictures taken of some Fan Towers that have already been built in our Colorado Division. The monopole to the left there, you can kind of see, and then a zoom in on the antenna, sorry, that's not the right way, but it kind of shows you what's at the top of the antenna with the steel monopole. Steel monopole is mounted on a drill pier foundation. And the tower height at the Eden Prairie Substation is going to be 165 feet. Chris, maybe you want to speak just a little bit on the need for that height, because we talked about range?
Yeah, so, I mean, as we, as we drop down, the area we can cover quite, shrinks quite a bit. Clutter becomes more of an issue. Tree height, buildings, all sorts of other stuff tends to provide shadows and lessens our ability to cover the area with this. This is a line-of-sight technology, so unlike some of the lower bands, it doesn't penetrate very well. So we really do like to stay up high with this particular band, so.
We have a proposed height of 165 feet at the Eden Prairie Substation. And each, each site will require a different height, some lower, some higher, but this particular case it'd be 165, which is why we're here to talk about the variance as well. Moving on.
Commissioner Higgins?
Sure. Is that 165-foot height the max that you've had in operation so far? Or is there, are there some towers that are taller elsewhere?
We have some towers in Colorado. We have a freestanding tower that's 195 feet, actually, at our Valencia Service Center. And then we co-locate on other towers, in some cases are higher than that even. So it just depends on the territory, what we wish to cover.
Sorry, I have a question.
Commissioner Villarreal?
Do the towers act as a mesh with one another, so that if one goes down, you have the access to, and that's just reroute data?
So this, the YMAX technology, that is not the case. They do not mesh. However, the, the Y-SUN technology does, and we'll find another path home. So as, as the devices are cut off from the network, say this site goes down, it'll work to find another way at another adjacent site. And sometimes it can go quite a ways from wherever to make that trip. We would try to avoid that to keep our latency steadier, so we don't want too many hops. But in the event that something comes down, we, it can make that, the Y-SUN tier can make that happen.
Okay, moving on. This is a kind of a profile view of what we call the H-frame. These are the components, are the ground components. So the antenna at the top of the tower is connected by coax cables. Those coax cables lead down to this particular device. And if I back up to this slide, you can kind of see, if you look to the left of the monopole, you can see that base equipment there, which captures basically all what the antenna is. And that's going to look like this. I believe that sits on two drilled, drilled pier foundations. And then basically that's what we call the base or the ground unit. Following that, this is actually a picture from Google Earth, looking from Highway 5 south through the substation. Steve wanted me to put this together, just so you get an idea of heights. There's a lot of stuff going on here. To the, to the left of the screen would be the Gander Mountain Site, where there's other transmission towers. But just as an example, the tall tower to the left is 165 feet. So that'll give you a pretty good perspective of how tall the monopole would be. And then the top spikes of the, what we call the goalposts there inside the substation are about at 110 feet. The question came up, why can't you just put this on top of your 165-foot tower? You're already there, right? Great idea. Problem is, is that that particular tower there is carrying a 345 kilovolt transmission line, which is crucial to the substation there. That cannot be taken out of service to install it nor to maintain it. Also, I believe there's a requirement that the antenna has to be so many feet below the energized wires.
It's either, it's either got to be 20 feet under the bottom conductor or over the top. And like you mentioned, in this particular case, it's a double-circuit 345, and they really do not want it taken down.
Pretty, pretty vital line, yeah. So it creates a reliability issue for us to try to do that. Obviously, using an existing tower would be very economical and very efficient, but in many cases, we just simply can't do that. Any questions on the visual here from the substation?
Commissioner Villarreal?
How far away is the monopole going to be from the 345 KV line?
Well, in the picture there, if we back up a little bit, let's see here. So you can kind of see where the red dot is there. The 345 tower, if you look, the shorter one is just at the top, right there, I believe. I don't know about the angle there. The other one is further off the screen there. So we're talking a couple hundred feet possibly.
Okay. And they have to be 25 feet away.
And then the, the line that runs along the highway, that's the 69? That's the lower voltage, so just...
115.
That's 115?
115, yeah.
That's still more than 25 feet away?
Yeah, yeah. In your packet, I think in the location plan, shows the setback to the property line.
So you're going to have worries about the line arcing?
Well, I mean, I'm not. These guys aren't either, that's probably not a problem, so. Going back to where we were here, I believe that is probably it. With that, we'll end up with questions. If you have further questions about our request for the site plan review approval and the variance.
Any other questions before we go to the city staff? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, will you be doing the staff report this evening?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, the applicant is requesting a site plan review as well as a variance request. The site plan review is requested in response to modification being added to an existing substation, which is in place today and received approval several decades ago, went through public process. The variance request is related to the height of the monopole. City code requires any, or has a height maximum of 150 feet, and since they're requesting 165, they are seeking a variance. Staff is recommending approval of both the site plan and the variant, the site plan and the variance request, subject to the language that is included in your staff report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from commissioners? I have one, Julie, do you know where the 150 came from originally in code?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, so in anticipation of that exact question, we did a little research. And back when the city was establishing height requirements with regard to telecommunications and other types of towers, like we do currently with a lot of code amendments, there was a lot of research done as to how do other communities address it? What is their height requirement? And the height requirement that was primarily utilized by other communities at that point was either 150 to 160 feet. And at that time, Eden Prairie opted to go with the 150, since it was in that ballpark and in line with what other communities were doing as well, and would allow the opportunity through a variance review for anything that needed to go above that, that height restriction.
And there's at least one out there that has that variance?
Yes, correct.
Any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Meti?
Sorry, this is actually a question for the applicant that I should have asked earlier. So the, this Fan Tower is 165 feet, but then you're showing other smaller towers that it connects to. How tall are those, and what kinds of areas would those be located in?
So, let me first ask, so the, the main tower is, the monopole's 160 feet plus five foot for the lightning rod extension. Are you mentioning the H-frame pedestal that's next to it, or the adjacent devices?
No, that, yeah, the diagram that showed...
Okay, so yeah, that, those, that's about 10 to 12 feet high at most.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be very small at the bottom, basically out of sight.
Thank you.
Yep.
Commissioner De Sanctus, question?
It says in the proposal that the FAA does not require a lighting on top of the tower. Now you'd be looking at two 165-foot elevations in fairly close proximity with a general aviation airport three miles southwest. Do you anticipate any concerns about line-of-sight clearance for prop aircraft?
I do not. The FCC, we work with the FCC, who then goes to the FAA, checks for approvals on behalf. So the FCC will, will talk with the FAA. If there's any issues at all, they come back and they, they require us to light it as needed. And we're outside of a runway path here in this case, even though we're not too far from flying cloud airports.
I think you might find in your packet the letter of no hazard determination from the FAA, although it's included with Steve. But they, they did do the study and determined that it was not a hazard, nor did it need to be light lit a tower.
It's not unusual. Typically, it's 200 feet to light a tower if you're outside of a flight runway area.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, so if anyone would like to come forward and speak for against this project, do so now, please. Alright, seeing none, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move to close the public hearing.
Motion by Commissioner Higgins, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Freiberg. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, any further discussion?
I don't think I've heard any concerns about this request, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to recommend approval of the site plan on 12.16 acres based on staff report dated December 5th, 2018, and plan stamped dated October 26th, 2018.
I have a motion to approve from Commissioner Villarreal, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed, say aye?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Move to approve variance number 2018-06 to permit a monopole tower at 165 feet based on staff report dated December 5th, 2018, and plan stamped dated October 26th, 2018.
Alright, I have a motion to approve the variance by Commissioner Kirk, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Commissioner Villarreal. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, site plan review and approval of the variance. Good luck on your project. Thank you for entertaining our questions tonight. Alright, moving on, we have a planners' report tonight, Julie?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, under planners' report this evening, staff would like to review with you the 2019 work plan for the planning commission. As you know, on an annual basis, staff prepares a work plan for the planning commission to review. Largely, your work as a commission is generated by applications and land use development requests. But there are some issues that the staff would like to identify as possible talking points or discussion items for educational purposes throughout the year or when project loads might be a little bit lighter than others, and provide us a little more opportunity to come together and share our thoughts and opinions on a matter. So as a part of the annual work plan, staff always includes some of the information with regard to just charter statements and roles and responsibilities of the planning commission. So that is the type of information that is shared on the front page of your work plan. On the second page of your work plan, we, as staff, have identified goals for each quarter of 2019. So as you can see, in the first quarter, staff is proposing to work toward ASPIRE implementation strategies. So staff is getting very close to being able to submit the ASPIRE comp plan update to the Met Council. So as we are doing that and working through that process, we'll want to be prioritizing those implementation strategies and communicating those back with the commission. As a follow-up to that, in quarter two, looking toward code amendments that would align the zoning ordinance with the initiatives identified in ASPIRE, as well as visiting, revisiting the parks rezoning. If you'll recall, last year, the city adopted a Parks Zoning District. So now that we have that zoning district on the books, now it's time to go back and actually apply that on the ground and rezone some of those city park properties to a Parks District instead of the variety of zoning districts that we currently have. And then looking into the third and fourth quarters, ongoing code amendments with regard to ASPIRE or just general cleanup clarification or improvements of the zoning ordinance. And then also taking a look at a training curriculum for planning commission members. Right now, the planning commission receives education on conflict of interest and things of that sort from a legal perspective. But staff is excited about the opportunity of creating a curriculum that would be a little bit more detailed. And we look forward to your input as new commissioners. What do you think would have been important information to share with you? And how to best share that, so that as new commissioners come on, everybody has an opportunity to share their previous knowledge, but is working with a basic understanding of issues and roles and responsibilities and general policy. So that's a big lift for us this year, but we're excited to do that and kick that off probably in more detail in 2020. So that is your work plan. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, entertain any other ideas or things you might want to see added to that in a more general or specific timeframe.
Okay, questions, ideas for anybody, discussion, yes. Christian Villarreal?
So Julie, is this the opportunity where I talk about things that are interesting to me, to see where it fits in that work plan?
We can certainly talk about that, yes.
So the first one, I was out to dinner a couple weeks ago at a, at a restaurant that serves Korean barbecue. And one of the things of the Korean barbecue experience is to have the grill in front of you, so you can cook it yourself. But because of ventilation requirements, they're not allowed to have the grill in front of you. Now, there are changes in ordinances around the country, including Minneapolis, that allow for new, new alternative ways of providing ventilation, either direct ventilation above the table that is out there and available. And so one of the questions I have in thinking about something to look forward to in the future is, where are there opportunities in something like allowing either exemptions or updating to things like ventilation requirements that would allow for businesses and restaurants like this Korean barbecue restaurant to actually recreate the actual experience of doing Korean barbecue instead of having it be cooked, you know, in the, in the kitchen behind where no one can see it, instead and put it right in front of you, like you're supposed to have it?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, my professional guess on that is that that is not a zoning regulation so much as it is a building code regulation. So I believe that is something that probably falls outside of Chapter 11, Chapter 12, where the planning commission responsibilities generally lie. That's something I can certainly have a conversation with the building official about, but that does sound more building code-related, but we can certainly check it out.
Fair enough. And then the second one, I'll reemphasize from the 2040 discussion, is a lot of what Xcel's doing on their substations is to identify and start planning for electric vehicle charging, especially direct charge, fast charging, which requires... especially direct charge, fast charging, which requires a lot more kilowatts to be delivered into the system. So DC fast charging are looking at upwards of 300 some odd kilovolt charges. So they were talking about the big giant line, that would be pumped directly into a DC fast charger at a place like Gander Mountain or somewhere. So that is something, in my opinion, is something that we need to start addressing and planning for, is identifying where are the optimal locations, working with Xcel as an example, or the co-op that serves the other side of the, of the city, to identify where are the optimal locations to place a DC fast charger infrastructure, because it will be necessary to meet a lot of the carbon-saving targets of the state.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, staff can certainly reach out. I'm not sure exactly who the point person would be that we reach out to in those organizations that Commissioner Villarreal has mentioned, but that is certainly a conversation that we can explore to understand what that process is, and how that may or may not impact the planning commission's duties, and kind of where that fits into the general city work plan.
Thank you, Julie.
All the other discussion items, or, did you want to form a motion on this?
Yes, please.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2019 Planning Commission work plan.
I'll move to approve the 2019 work plan.
I second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Villarreal, and a second by Commissioner Dusinkus. All those in favor approving the work plan, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the work plan's approved. Moving on tonight, members' reports. I guess I have one. I would like to just, I think it's Commissioner Freiberg's last meeting, so I would like to say thanks for your service on the planning commission as you go off to bigger and better things. I hope you don't forget, or I think our recommendations aren't sound when you review them in the future.
If I could, I'd just like to interject something, that, this is kind of bittersweet moving on. Being elected to the city council now, I have not forgotten my roots. This is, I spent six years as a commissioner almost now, and almost three years on the planning commission. Don't forget ever, what you do is really, really important. When I first came on, it was told to me by the council, in fact, I think it was Kathy Nelson told me, that directly, she thanked me for what we do on the planning commission, because it enables them to do what they do. I mean, you're doing the grunt work, you're doing the tough work on this. And if you ever doubt, looking around, how important it is, look at all the cranes, look, look at all the construction that's happening out there, look at all the work that you've done. I mean, you've done good work. And my heart is, you know, still here. I do, I am going to miss this, you know? So remember, as I move on now, gets sworn in, January 8, the next meeting, you definitely have a friend up there, as far as, I do highly respect each and every one of you, so, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Freiberg. All right, any other members' reports this evening? All right, continuing business, new business, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. I think Mr. Freiberg should make that motion. That's a good idea.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Freiberg, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a tie for a second between Commissioner Kirk and Commissioner Weber. All those in favor of adjourned the meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, meeting's adjourned.
And happy holidays to all of you.